All right, so it's 7:00 o'clock. We'll call this to order. Hello? All right. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock. We'll start. I want to remind everybody, please make sure that you sign in for the minutes. Also, if you speak, please identify yourself and the town that you're from for the public, for the recording. And there are note cards around the room, and you can write down questions and pop them in the box, and we will answer them. We have all the questions that we've received on choice that we'll go through tonight. Before we get started, I'll -- my name is Joe Winrick. I'm the chair. I'm a Townsend representative on this board. And then we'll just introduce everybody at the table, and we'll get started.
Trish Scott. I'm from Townsend, but I'm an at-large representative.
Bill.
I am Bill Antone. I'm the superintendent.
Emily. Emily Long from Newfane.
Drew Hiddleton, Jamaica.
Christina Robinson, Jamaica.
Lindsay Brooks from Newfane.
Ken McFadden, Newfane.
Holly Garland, Wyndham Center.
Sorry. All right. Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, changes to the agenda tonight, folks?
Yeah, let's not have it cut in June or postponed.
Okay, well, we'll move it to the library since it's air-conditioned in here.
Okay.
Anything else? Oh, because Lori's ready.
So, the only thing would be, we talked about changing the order.
Right. Because our business manager is actually here instead of arriving at 8:15, we're going to move the financial update up the agenda and have that first because that actually probably impacts the rest of the discussions that we have tonight. Anything else that we need to change, rearrange, adjust?
You gotta get on camera.
Okay. Thank you. Correspondence. We have a letter that we'll post to the website that I know I've distributed to all the board. I don't think -- I apologize. I'm betting there's not copies of it for everybody. But it's from Mr. Hegy discussing actually what we're going to be talking about at the next meeting, which is the pre-K. But I wanted to acknowledge that we did receive it. Okay. So, I'm sorry. I skipped over members of the public. I apologize. Is anybody here for something other than to participate in the discussion about school choice tonight? Because that would be -- now would be your time to talk to us about something other than that. Oh, you're waving. You're just a friendly member of the public. Okay. We'll get you all during this school choice discussion. Okay. So, new business. Lori, you wanna, since we moved you up, you want to go ahead and give the financial presentation, and then we'll just work down A through F?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So, do you want to do the clicking for me? Would you mind?
I will do the clicking.
Okay. I'm not sure. I'm supposed to stand over here, but do you guys want to sit in the back?
I don't want to be in anyone's way. Are we? Can you?
We're gonna be a little rude and turn our backs to you.
All right.
Nothing personal.
So, I'll be over here. Is that good for you? Okay. All right. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. I wanted to start with just acknowledgement that nobody really likes to talk about taxes, and nobody really likes to talk about taxes when it comes to educating their students. We all just want to spend what it takes and go from there. I also want to acknowledge that there has been in the past, and I'm sure there's, you know, sometimes there's some anger or discomfort with what we have control over and what we don't have control over as far as the tax equation is concerned. So, taking those both into account, I just want to share with you the realities that are facing West River Education District. Okay. Go ahead, Bill. Let's go on to the next. Oh, you did. Nope, you didn't. You did, but they didn't.
It's frozen?
Maybe. Yes?
Right?
It's fine.
Pop. It says $3,000, but it's $320.
All right. Let's come down to the slide.
The screen is frozen.
Here.
Oh, you can do it.
I got it.
We're back on. Okay.
Cancel box.
So, this slide you should recognize from the presentation that we presented to the board with the two options. So, it shows what the current combined budgets would have been if you just took all of fiscal year '19 and put them together. And then it also shows the second, looking at fiscal year '20 with some assumptions. We're going to focus on that tonight. No structural changes. That $11.3 million right there. All right. Next slide. All right. So, let's break it down. So, that $11.3, almost $11.4 million, is all of your fiscal year '19 budgets combined, and it has two assumptions: negotiated increases and healthcare increases. That's all it has. It's important to know what it does not have. Does not have any special education assumptions. It does not have any equity adjustments or capital planning additions. Okay? So, that's the base. We're going to work with that number and work it through your tax rate. All right. So, here we are with the cost of getting to per-student cost, which is basically what the tax rate is all about. So, you've got your $11.4 million, and you have some offsetting revenues. Offsetting revenues are revenues that are not ed spending. They could be tuition. They could be rent. They could be any other types of grants that are brought in. You simply subtract those, and you have $9.8 million in ed spending. So, now we have to divide that by the equalized pupils. So, we're estimating equalized pupils at 510 equalized pupils. So, a lot of calculations that go into that that you can review. The VSBN has a great PowerPoint that goes through that as well. So, this is one of the major cost-driving factors, is your equalized pupil. So, it's simple math, and then you have a cost per student of $19,000. All right. But before we go on, let's just talk about the equalized pupil as far as -- nope, I'm sorry. You can go on. Before we go on much further, let's just talk about this in terms. Now, this is something you've seen. You've all heard about declining enrollment, right? We all know that that is a problem. So, what I did is I took a look back, and I took a look forward. And what I combined all of the equalized pupils back to fiscal year '15. So, if West River had been a district then, a unified district, then you would have been somewhere in the 590 students, okay? To give you some perspective of the 510 now. But you can see, we're planning for fiscal year '20 now. So, what happens? This is where I get jazzed, okay? Because this is an opportunity right here. Because we have the opportunity to reset the tax rate and stabilize it to our equalized pupils. So, you know, you can see, it stabilizes, and actually by fiscal year '23, assuming we get the same amount of pre-Ks in, which is about 36, that there's even a slight uptick there. So, we're back to our cost per student. So, we have the $19,000 that you saw on the previous slide, and we take the threshold. The threshold of fiscal year '19 was $17,816, and that is a cost containment that the state puts out there. It's like the line in the sand, right? You're not supposed to cross it. But in this case, we do. We cross it by $1,400. There are some exclusions that we can reduce that penalty by, some different things that are not included in the cost per student. So, we can get that down to $717. So, that is what you are paying double taxation on. And that is a cost per student, not overall. It's per student. So, you simply add that $717 to your $19,000 up there, and now you're at a $20,000 cost per student. This is all based on that $11.4 million. Okay. So, here we are with the cost per student that includes the penalty, and we look at the yield. I did put a definition in your supplement to about what the yield is. I'm not going to go into detail about that right now, but we're going to use $10,000 as the yield number. The yield went from, in fiscal year '19, the yield went from $9,800 to $10,220 when the governor decided to use one-time money and to drive down the tax rate. So, we'll use $10,000 for easy math. So, that gives you a $2 tax, the unified tax rate, based on that $11.4 million. So, now there's an incentive, right? When you voted for this, this is part of it, what, part of the deal, so to speak, was an incentive. This is going to be reduced every year for the next four years, right? So, it's reduced 2 cents each year. But this year, it's 8 cents. So, this is your unified tax rate, $192. Okay? Is everybody following me so far? Okay. Go ahead, Bill. So, who does this tax rate affect, right? It affects every person. It affects homeowners, renters, retirees, parents, guardians, grandparents, store owners, everyone. And it affects from the following towns, including Wyndham, because they pay for their secondary through this unified tax rate. How does it affect? It affects property taxes, which is your house in two acres, or if you are income-sensitive, it also affects you there. All right. So, once you get to the $192, how does it affect my town? What do I see on my tax bill? Okay? So, it has to run through the CLA, which is the Common Level of Appraisal, which is also in your definitions there. It's basically the method to equalize, to make sure that each town is paying their fair share of tax. So, these are what the fiscal year '19 CLAs look like. Go ahead, Bill. All right. Who's from Brookline? We got one person from Brookline? Okay. So, Brookline's going to topple the $2 tax rate, right there. 62 cents in the last six years, 44 percent. So, you can see how the CLA plays into this because they were reappraised. They were reappraised in 2016, and they went from 104 percent to 98 percent. So, when your CLA is high, your tax rate is lower. When your CLA is low, your tax rate is higher. Go ahead, Bill.
Jamaica.
Jamaica. Thank you. There's kind of a lag here. Okay. Who's from Jamaica? All right. We got lots of people from Jamaica. All right. So, your tax rate went up, has gone up 45 cents, 31 percent, in the last six years. You guys were reappraised this year. You probably know that, right? Yeah? Okay. What was interesting about Jamaica is when we were planning for fiscal year '19, we had you come up with an estimated tax rate that you see in your town report, and two things happened. The governor used one-time money and drove the yield up, which drove your tax rate down a little bit. But at the same time, your CLA, you were reassessed, and you went down 9 percent. So, your tax rate, if you were to look at your town report and look at this, you'd be like, this doesn't make sense. But it's because of these things that happened after the whole planning, after the vote, basically. All right. Next. Newfane. Who's here from Newfane? All right, we got, ooh, quite a few people. Right. All right. So, we have quite a jump for Newfane. Again, they were reassessed in this year, right? They were reassessed this year, right? 2018. So, you went from 108 percent to 94 percent in your CLA. So, that's what is driving up the tax rate there. All right. We got one more. We got Townsend. Townsend. Who do I see? All right. Nice. So, Townsend's interesting, right? Because you can see, the tax rate has actually been fairly stable. I think, you know, 13 cents over six years is not horrible, 8 percent. But what's interesting about Townsend, and, you know, maybe Mr. Hegy can help me out here, but they have not been reappraised since 2012.
'14 is when it came into effect.
Okay. '14. So, that was before all of this. And we're not sure when they will be reappraised again. I would assume soon, but...
None of the cards at this point.
All right. That's good news for Townsend then. That's good news. So, if they were appraised, let's just say at 100 percent, that their CLA came down from 108 to 100, then they would be at a $192 tax rate. You can see how this works. All right. So, what happens to the unified tax rate if we add $100,000 to now $11.4 million? $500,000, $1 million. What does it do? So, for every $100,000, you're going to add an additional 4 cents to your tax rate. And that is figured in with the incentive there. $196 to $112, and $231, and then it runs through the CLA, what we just did. What happens if we reduced $100,000? $500,000, $1 million. You can see where it resets the tax rate. All right. So, let's just say we wanted to just get to the threshold, to that line in the sand that the state draws. That would be a reduction in expenses from the $11.391 million of $749,000. So, I think if you remember, Bill, if you just want to go back to our bar chart. So, we were working with the second bar there, and the third bar was one of the options. We didn't even get to the threshold there. Just wanted to point that out. So, it would be another $150,000 roughly to get down to that. What if we just wanted to not pay a penalty? Okay? What if the board said, "We're going to draw the line, and we're not going to pay a penalty"? Okay? $336,000. $366,000, sorry, $1,000, which would reduce the tax rate by 14 cents. Okay. Some questions, right? I think we all understand that it's, nobody likes to talk about this, nobody wants to hear it, but it is the current reality of what we're facing. And so, there's two things that I want to ponder, I guess, is what is the tipping point? What is the tax rate that people are just going to come out to the voting booth and say, "No, I'm just not going to do it"? Right? So, what's that tipping point? I'm not sure what it is. But it is something for the board to ponder. And then I think that it's also important to look at what are our neighbors paying to the north and south of us. So, there's a regional comparison in your packets there, and I think you guys have it on your sheet. And so, I have to look at my security. Come on to my thing. So, let's just take a look. I mean, there's a certain amount of competitive tax rate that needs to be thought about. So, we've got our Wyndham Central and all the towns in there. This is what they each paid for in fiscal year '19, okay? So, you can look and see how your immediate neighbors played out in their taxes. And then the northeast, to the north of us, Bellas Falls area, right? So, we're looking at, you know, Brockingham being, I think, the highest at $1.68. And then southeast, down in the big metropolis of Bradboro, right? They're $1.58. And the surrounding towns, you've got the highest there, Guilford, at $1.70. And then we have southwest, to the west of us, Whitingham and Wellington. You can see that Wellington has hit that $2 mark. So, I think that there are lots of questions to be asked and to consider. I would encourage you to write them down on the cards, do the online forum, whatever you have for questions surrounding the financial impact, you know, we're happy to answer. Just, you know, write it down there, and we're gathering all that, and we're answering all those. So, that's really what I have for the tax presentation, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is your family? Can I ask you a question? Sure. The comparison to a average statewide, when compared to...
The cost per student or the average?
Well, I guess whatever we can compare. That's really helpful to know, because I do think that it's important to remember that what we, it's a statewide system.
System.
So, whatever we decide to do here impacts across the state, and that's one of the reasons why we're hearing a pushback and why this penalty's here and why there's challenges around education and funding. So, it's good to know where we are related to the state as a whole.
Sure. I can absolutely get you that information.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Lori? Thank you. As we talk about what we're going to do next and where we go, that's important information to have, and that was also something that people have been asking about, you know, on the website and at meetings, and, you know, hopefully that gives people some idea of where things are going. So, the school choice survey results, I think those are in the packet that was distributed. We have them. Bill, you want to speak to them briefly, just by way of introduction?
Sure. So, we had 119 responses. We have 232 families, and these are not unbelievably exact because we can't track our four-year-olds and our, as easily as we can kindergarten through sixth. But we do know we have 270 total students, and we know that that 119 represents 51 percent of that 232. So, going off of 270 total students and 50 percent of people responding to the survey, we're going off of the idea that 135 students were represented in that survey. Does everybody kind of understand that? Okay. We had 29 total students indicate a yes. I would be interested in going to a different location than I currently go to if school choice was offered. 13 of those 135, or approximately 10 percent, are currently enrolled in our schools last year. Does that make sense? 16 out of those 29 are not, were not enrolled last year. They are either home-study students or independent school students. Everybody following me with that? All right. So, you had 29 students were indicated they would be interested in school choice. 13 that are currently in the system would like to go to a school other than where they currently go to. 16 home-study or independent school students would like to participate in a school of their choice if that was an option for them. And then on the right-hand side, in this little graph, you kind of see the in and the out. So, the easiest way to understand that is home-study students, we don't count those in our ADM right now. So, they're a zero. But 16 would come in as indicated by the results of the survey. They would participate in our ADM count, as Lori showed, our 510. If all 16 participated and came to our schools, that would now go to 526. And then you can just see as it goes down, the in and the out. So, an in means they wanted to attend that school or indicated they wanted to attend that school. Out means that they're currently intending that school and wanted to go to a different I tried to break, it was, I tried to make it as simple as possible. Does that kind of all make sense?
Questions about the survey results? So, I mean, we've got the survey results. We'll get down to really discussing choice. I think the, we have the questions that were asked of us that, I mean, I don't know, I think we want to be able to answer these as much as possible so that we can post answers on the website, which we should be able to have actually live tomorrow?
Give me till Wednesday.
Give you till Wednesday?
You'll be able to see it tomorrow. As the chair.
Okay. And then, you know, we can continually push you back to the West River Education District website. It's only for this. It will have all the minutes, all the videos, all the documents, all the correspondence, all the questions, all the comments, everything with answers, and so you can see everything that we're doing. We have some research information that was provided to us and questions that were answered, and also additional information on the sixth grade that we have to, that we'll put up there tonight, that we'll put up on that website, that we, just the board got them, and we want to make sure that we look at them before we put them up there. But anyway, these questions. The first question that we got talks about, is the only way to maintain the status quo to cut 2 million mentioned in the presentation, which I believe talks about, you know, Plan A or B, and doesn't this negate school choice? If we did consolidate schools and close things, then yes, that would negate choice, but we're not moving towards those at this point. That's the same question. Another question about that. Most of the comments talk about, you know, wanting school choice, which just leads us to the survey and everything else. The one question about, will this cost more money? Probably yes, choice will increase the budget, I would guess, depending on what we decide to do with transportation. And then, have you considered this option, using the choice option for the first year that we operate? That's what we're talking about tonight. But those are the questions that we were asked. Did we think I skipped anything or didn't answer something?
Well, there's no problem with choice.
We're just talking about the questions, and then we'll move on to choice.
Well, okay.
Okay? So, we can move past that, and, you know, we can start talking about choice. You know, the survey seems to support it. Those comments seem to support it, but you have a comment on choice?
Yep. There's one factor we didn't take into account, which is if you have a family that has five children, and they want school choice from, say, Jamaica to Townsend, there has to be five different openings. You got to take either all or none, because the family's probably not going to say, "Well, okay, I want to split my kids up into two different schools because Junior and Mary can't go because there's no openings in those grades."
Well, that's where we have to develop the policy on choice, you know, that there would be a deadline for submitting an application. The applications would be blind, other considerations that we would make. I know that at some point, we're going to have the, did you distribute those policies?
So, Ken is the chair of the Policy Subcommittee. So, I have rounded up similar policies throughout the state since multiple systems have started in '17 and started in '18. So, we actually have some really good models about how different districts are doing that. And so, from this discussion until your next discussion on the 11th about school choice, it'll be parsing through those and seeing those options. But we have time to develop a school choice policy that would match the goals of the board.
I was just curious to know, are you able to tell whether the people that were responding to school choice were these high school students or were they elementary students?
This was all just K-6, but could you introduce yourself for the...
I'm a Joyce fan, Pamela.
And the town you're...
Newfane.
Thank you. No, this was just a K-6 survey. This is not high school at all.
Thank you.
So, any other discussion on choice? I mean, it's, at this point, we're going to decide at the next meeting what we want to do going forward, whether we actually want to pursue choice for the next year or not. And then we would have to start developing policy for it according to our timeline. That's the decision point meeting. I mean, this is just a conversation about whether or not it's a good idea and whether we should pursue it and develop the policy or not. It seems to me, based on the responses that we're getting in the survey response, that it's a very popular thing and that we should really, you know, start looking at policies to have choice work and figure out what it's going to look like in the district. But that's what we want to hear. to hear from everybody.
Yeah. So I think that makes sense either way, that we should be looking at policy around this anyway because even if we aren't going to implement this coming in this current budget that we're going to be starting working on this fall, we should be looking at policy around this based on feedback we're getting.
Okay, yeah. Drew?
I'm just looking at these numbers and seeing that we had 50% of the students, which is 28 students, so we could be looking at moving over 50 students through the choice program. Almost 60 students. So I think that shows that there is certainly a public desire for choice and we need to give it a lot of consideration early. And I would ask for some additional detail, if we can get it from the administration, as to what that would do to class sizes specifically. Are we looking at 21 first graders moving to Townsend or is this split across all the grades? Is it even possible if we were to assume these numbers to provide that choice?
You'd have to have an ongoing breakdown every year.
Do you speak up, Ken, please?
You've got to have a breakdown every year of the availability in each grade in each school. It would have to be done. Because, and you're going to have to put a cap on class size. For example, say 18 students is the max, 20 students is the max that you're going to have in New Brook, sixth grade, fifth grade, whatever. Then you're going to have to say, hey, so this is our class size. Kindergarten is a different, completely different picture because depending on the size of the room, depends on the footage per student, which brings that to a lower number in kindergarten. So that's, that by itself is an undertaking.
So the question, so the question we want to, the further information that we want to get are, for this to start discussing it is what, what are the grade levels of the students that are looking to move around with choice? Where are we going to see the influx? You can find, you can tell us that, right, Bill?
Yeah. Luckily, we collected the 29 email addresses and I can absolutely reach out to those 29 individual people and find out where their students would be next year in grades. And I can give you an idea of that. But I also think the point that both Drew and Ken are making is the board has to decide what, what flexibility and class size policies would work within that arena as well. So we have two things. One is what's our class size policy? And then the other one is what do we know from half of the people that filled out the survey? What would that look like?
Well, I figured that would give us an idea of what kind of limits we'd want to look at in policy.
Sure.
And then we just go forward setting up policy.
Well, policy that exists now in the SU is we're going to try to meet the state's end. Right? Is that correct?
They're guidelines.
They're guidelines. Yes, they're not. So it's more of, we're going to try to do it. We can't guarantee it's going to be done. If the cap is set at 15 or 17 kids and there's 18 kids out here, you can't throw one kid out of the class. It's just the way it is. Or vice versa. There's less.
Okay. Well, in the back there?
Dana West, Jamaica. Kind of moved what Ken's talking about. I mean, if you only got 18 slots, who goes? How do you make that choice and the one that gets left out can say you're discriminating? It could open up some scary places.
We have to address that in policy, I would think. You know, blind choice makes the most sense to me thinking right off the top of my head, but we haven't started looking at this.
That would be the only fair way.
I believe you're next and then Mike and then somebody down here and then in the back. Okay.
Joyce Pham-Pelee from New Fane. The other, the other thing I'm thinking from the school teacher point of view is when they apply to have school choice one year, do they apply the next year or do they, once they make their application, then do they stay at that school the rest of their education?
That's a good question, a question we're going to have to answer.
I think some of the research I've read, some school districts do a lottery, right? So if there's more applicants than, you know, than slots, then you do a lottery. It's blind, it's fair, it's something to consider.
My name is Amy Joyce, so thank you.
And there's one, you've got to change the availability in each building and each grade has to be done beforehand, before you can even think about setting a policy.
Okay.
So each build, each, each one of the three buildings, we have to.
So we're talking about maximum numbers that we could take in, but we haven't really said anything about those that are leaving and the impact on the sending district, so-called, the sending school, not district. And we need to be, that would need to be a very big part of the conversation that we have when we talk about choice because it's pretty clear that this is pretty significant. I mean, it can have a pretty big impact.
Mm-hmm.
So, on a single school.
Yes, Drew?
And my point was going to be the same, that if we're looking at Jamaica, for example, assuming that this is 50% of the people that want to move, that's 10 students. That can be an entire classroom. And at what point do we say there's only two kids left in fifth grade in Jamaica because the other ones are choice out? We're going to have to address that as well on both sides. Not only the maximum number, but the minimum number of students for which we're operating a class.
Which will have also a great, sorry to interrupt. Sorry, it'll also have a really big effect on transportation and whatever that transportation decision is. If we are talking about, is two okay in a classroom? Is two not okay in a classroom? And are we now providing transportation? Or I don't, all of that is a big, big conversation.
It's not fair.
In terms of the policy, once we get there.
Right. Yes.
And another thing that wouldn't necessarily be addressed in the policy, but that I'm curious about myself is that how much does location as opposed to school itself have to do with the decision that people have made to fill out this in the way that they have? So we look at this and it's pretty clear that the town that people would like to go to more than others is the most centrally located. Does that have any impact on it? And I forgot whether we talked about that in the survey. I...
I do have all the people that gave reasons for wanting to take the option of school choice. However, there's some personally identifiable information in those answers and so sharing that raw data would not be appropriate.
Right.
But I'm happy to do some sort of small gleaning analysis if you wanted to entrust me to something like that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of things that might not be addressed in a policy and what that might impact going down the road.
Sure.
I think that'd be good to get the analysis, Bill.
Okay.
Ken?
No. That's enough questions to answer now, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You got enough?
Guys keep me very busy.
Anybody else have anything they want to add to this discussion? Yes, sir.
Now, school choice. So this was in the thing, specific to this district. I know at one time, two years ago, Jamaica's students were, parents were thinking about going north, getting out of the district. Is that still going to be thrown on the table again? It's asked to stay within the border, right? School choice, within the district.
This is within the district, school choice. There's no choice outside of the district other than what exists now where you're free to send your child wherever you want to pay for them to go. But the district would be paying the cost.
Just wondered if there was maybe some miscommunication.
No.
If I can just say, we were worried about that and we put it very clearly in the survey to make sure it was clear it was only within the schools that were, that were listed. So I thought we did a pretty good job on that. And I don't know whether you guys...
Did anybody take the survey? Did that, was that clear?
Yeah. Sometimes people misconstrue. You have to beat them.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay. So do we, do we have the information with the questions that we've asked tonight to actually stick to the timeline and decide whether we're going to pursue choice for the, for the coming year, for the first year we operate or not?
Can we get the policy really soon to start reviewing the existing policies?
Okay.
Right, we can send that out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
And draft.
Draft. I mean, it would be drafts of, it would be other schools' policies.
You want that to all board members or to the Subcommittee?
I would say it's all board members.
It would also be interesting to be able to find policies from school districts that are similar to our district where the kids are all over, you know, where there's a transportation piece.
I think that's what we're looking for, is the new and merged districts, whether... Okay. Anything else?
So can you clarify the timeline for me? That we will have one meeting to, just one more meeting to discuss after we've reviewed policies and whatnot, now that we have an idea of where the community stands and whatnot, obviously with the survey results. We'll have one more meeting to discuss that. Not that we're finalizing a policy at that point, but that we feel confident that we can decide yes or no at that point.
Right, at the September 11th, at our next meeting, September 11th.
Yes.
We, on the timeline that we laid out, we would decide whether or not we're going to undertake moving the sixth grade for our first year of operation, as well as whether or not we're going to have school choice.
Yes.
In our first year of operation.
So it's not exactly what it's going to look like.
No, 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 no.
We're just deciding, yes, we can tackle that problem.
And then we would have to do the work to, you know, make that happen.
Yeah.
For the 2021 school year.
Really clear.
Yes. We're not, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to say at the next meeting or when we make that decision. And this is exactly what it will look like. But we'll know that we're willing to tackle that problem.
Right.
Because there are good reasons to. It's good for our students. There's a high, there's a great deal of interest in that and that that's work that we should and will do. That's true.
And my assumption is that we will build a budget around those decisions.
Yes.
And during that budget process, we will find out whether all of the challenges like transportation and classroom sizes and staffing are even feasible to fit within our budget.
Exactly.
So we make it, make these assumptions, decisions, and then find out that we can actually do that.
True.
And I think that, if I can follow.
Yep.
I think that's really an important point because saying something in concept without actually looking at the financial and student impact, it is, you know, we really need that. So we've got to be very clear that it won't be until the budget look that we're going to be able to make those kinds of decisions. But that's not any different than any other school year or any other budget development. It's just that it's, could be fairly significant for people who want it to go one way or the other.
Right. But if we don't decide what we're going to do, we can never even build a budget.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, it's kind of, you know, we have to make these decisions to build a budget and then the budget can make these decisions, could make us reconsider the decisions. This is essentially what you're saying. And you're right. Any other input? A lot of people with not much to say.
Bill, you want me to forward those policies?
I got it right here.
You got it, bring it forward.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. You, you wanted to talk about moving the October 2nd meeting.
I did, but River Valley's has moved theirs to the first.
So we don't...
You guys didn't want me battling back and forth with them, so we're okay.
I'm glad they gave in.
Yeah. That little talk I had with Rich worked. All right.
Thank you.
So the next item is, I'm talking about student board members on this board. I know that Leland and Gray has had student board members on the board for probably five years. And I know Bob actually, did he leave?
No, sorry.
No. Bob had actually sent me a formal request to have this added to the agenda and would like to have us at least discuss it, if not put it in place prior to the beginning of the school year so that we could get, you know, one or two student board members in place to begin working with us. I know, I'm done talking. Drew, go ahead.
I'd like to have Bob speak to this. Actually, you know what? When I move that we have student board members on the board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Yeah, have Bob speak to it.
Before Bob speaks to it, can I just, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Because it's on the same topic. I just wanted to also, because I, since you made the motion, it seems pretty clear. I just wanted to say from my own perspective, this has been invaluable for us at Leland and Gray.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to say I'm a skeptic, but I wasn't as sure that we would get participation when we first started doing this and having students on our board. But not only have we gotten participation, what I mean is people, they are coming to our meetings. They have been coming to our meetings over many years now. Their feedback is invaluable to us on the board. So I, I fully support this and think we should continue it. And I'm really looking forward to hearing what Bob has to say about it from his perspective.
Well, obviously, I'm an advocate of student voice and I think that our, we want to create every opportunity we can in our community for our students to be engaged in every possible level of democratic process. So I think that having two students, I think is a good number because then they have some level of comfort in having another peer there. Coming in, the Leland and Gray Board, we've tried to have one who's a junior, one who's a senior so that the junior would stay for two years and then the other one we would replace them, sort of like a little looping mechanism. So I think that's a great idea. I know that this board will represent students pre-K through 12. And so one question would be, why would it be the secondary level, which is a fair question. I think that, I mean, having been to dozens and dozens and dozens of board meetings over my professional career, I'm not sure that anyone under high school would really tolerate it coming on a regular basis. But I think there's also a lot of complexities that go on and the discussion can be pretty deep. And so having high school students, I think is the most appropriate. They're also the closest to voting age as well and I just think that's a good opportunity. I would say that, I think that one consideration to have is that they should not be considered just sort of, you know, pat them on the head and thanks for coming. We really should engage them in conversation. I think, you know, for example, the conversation we had at the last meeting about sixth graders being here, I think listening to a couple of older students talk about what that would be like for them and what they think Leland and Gray could offer those kids and they were sixth graders not long ago in these small schools and how that transition was for them and how, that would be a perspective that none of us would have. And there's, well, none of us would have recently. But they're pretty close to it and they'd be able to kind of speak to that. So I think those are the kinds of conversations you want them around for. The VSBA offers a lot of guidance around that. There's documents on their website that talk about how to maintain kid engagement. They obviously recommend a policy in place to speak to how to do it. I believe there are places that even have voting members on their board. Obviously, the State Board of Ed does. I'm not necessarily advocating for that. I think that'd be fantastic if the board wanted to go in that direction. But I think that, you know, as a starting place, having them here would be a great foot in the door. And if I'm directed to begin that search, I will begin that search.
Okay.
So I'm glad you brought up the part of voting because when we first initiated the conversation around student members on the school board, we had a lot of conversation around whether we would have voting members and chose not to. It was very new for us and we didn't know what it was going to look like. But I've had people come to me, students come to me and say, you know, it would be really valuable, I think. Our voice would be really valuable. I, you know, Bradmore right now is trying to work on an initiative to get 16 and 17-year-olds to be able to vote and serve in public office. I think that there's a lot of importance in student voice. And I, I'm not suggesting that we should be doing immediately, but I do think we should readdress, if we do decide to have students on the board, I think there's some real value in considering at least having one of them, the way the State Board does it, I believe, is the person that in their second year there, they vote that year. So there's always one who votes out of two. I believe that's correct. And so, you know, I think we should consider it. I really do. Give them, give them a voice.
Oh, sorry.
How are they chosen?
So the students, in the past, what they've done is they've applied. And to be honest, there hasn't been a huge line. So we've typically gone with who's applied. If there was a huge line, then I can present dossiers to you to select. I can select whatever the policy directs us to do. But in recent years, it's really just been, there's been one... But in recent years, it's really just been, there's been one or two applicants, and it's pretty much been it. So, but having a competitive process, I think, would be good.
What about a student election?
That could be the process, too. I think the policy would have to dictate the procedure for making it happen.
We, Leland and Gray has a policy, and it does, it does ask them to apply, and then the board selects. And the V S B A model actually recommends that as well, just because the election can, the student election, sometimes you have, it ends up not getting somebody who's really serious about being on the board necessarily. But, you know, we can, we can talk about, if we decide to put a student on the board, we'll have to develop our own policy. I could certainly get you the Leland and Gray policy and some of the V S B A stuff. You know, I, I've been on the Leland and Gray Board the whole time we've had student members, and I agree with what Emily said. They've been invaluable. Their perspective is, you know, things that we just hadn't thought of. And, you know, they've, they've actually had some serious impact in things that we've done over the years. Rick, you had a question?
Chris has.
Okay. Alicia.
First of all, it'd be really interesting to see what a student vote would do to the open seats and the articles, and if that kind of gets into a sticky wicket. And then, secondly, another thought is, I completely agree with the junior, senior loop. I think that adds to, to one of our goals. But I also think that we should maybe consider an open seat or two for a elementary student. My kids have attended numerous, many more school board meetings than they desire. And one year, my, I think it was last year, my, I think, he must have been eight. He tiptoed over one of the WCSU meetings during a budget vote and was like, "Mom, that budget is this much different than last year's budget." And so he does absorb and pay attention, so there are kids that might, and I would hate to squelch that at a young age. I would think having, I know we won't get much interest, but just to kind of leave room for people to grow, to have an open seat for the elementary age, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, what was the, what was the motion, Drew? To have student board members?
Yes.
Okay.
I was specifically thinking high school board members, and that's going to be on a great model. Motion, or you want to decide that by policy later?
We can, I, I'm comfortable deciding it by policy. I'm comfortable deciding it by policy if we just say student members.
And if I could just say that there are maybe other ways to include, in fact, there's many other ways to include all grade levels in the conver, in, in the representation. Even if it is just high school board members who are sitting on the board, we should, and could, put it in policy on how to bring in that voice.
Like a junior board member program, where they get to sit with them or something? Just something so that we're not squelching any civic desires for board members.
And Joe, just one thing to notice, too, I want to point this out, and that depends on how, where you guys go with this, but our most recent board member who graduated was not a member of one of the five towns. So he was, I believe he was from one of, from Woodsboro, I believe, right? No, he was...
Oh, I was, I'm thinking Dominic. I'm like, Dominic was Townsend. But Kai.
Kai.
Kai, Woodsboro. So just thinking about, like, that dynamic of what if you have a student
Yeah.
who is representative, could they be voting, if you're talking about voting? But what if they don't live in those towns?
That's right.
So there's, there are some things to think about. And that really should be at the policy level, and I love Drew's fervor to like, just, yeah, let's get this passed. But I, I wonder if maybe the right move is to vote, to direct a policy committee to develop policy, to get it adopted with all those things kind of thought through, rather than just throw some kids into the loop. So, but I appreciate Drew's.
No, I think you need to write policy. Thanks for throwing him back.
Anytime I can help you out, Ken, let me know. Oh, I, I agree that we need to decide it by policy. But I think, you know, once, if we agree that we want student board members,
Right.
we can develop a policy.
How to address all that.
You know, after that.
If the student's part of the A D M, right, I'm assuming the...
Some are by tuition, some are by local.
Again.
Yeah. All policy. All policy. But you're right, yeah.
Policy should...
Rick?
Yeah. In the middle.
Just to make a, oh, it's Rick Haggy Townsend, sorry. Just to make a note, from my own perspective, I could introduce tons of things here, and it would be far easier as a member of the public for me to see whatever policy you developed, so I could pinpoint my objections or my support based on that. Because I could keep you talking all night on, on this one item, so...
If we took voting off the table, could you, could you still keep us here all night on?
Well, just, well, that's what I'm saying. You guys, you guys should decide to go ahead and write the policy, but don't decide based on Drew's motion to allow members.
Absolutely. And then I actually think that that's what we're talking about here. It would be driven by policy. And, and if I can just say about policy? They're held in open meetings, and we need feedback when we develop policies, not just about this. We need it for every policy that we write, so...
Because Ken would love to have you on this.
I'd love, I'd love people from the public.
Yeah. Okay, so, the motion has been made and seconded to have student board members on this board. We all acknowledge that even if we adopt this motion, that we're going to have to come up with a policy whereby these student board members serve. But just as a general idea, are we in support of, is all in favor of having student board members? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. So, I can give you the Leland and Gray policy and the V S B A policy. You want them to go to just you or to everybody?
No, I'll send them to the whole board.
I'll send them to everybody. You know, I, I will tell you that when we developed the Leland and Gray policy, we talked a lot about whether or not students could vote. I believe we actually went to the attorneys and discussed whether or not we could give the students the vote. And we ran into the problem with the, you know, they don't, you know, one person, one vote. They don't have a constituency, they're not elected. And it came down to an opinion of, you know, you can give them the vote and wait to be told no, and have that argument, or you can, and we went with the more conservative, no, no voting.
We did, but others do allow...
But others do now. I mean, it's, it's, there is precedent, and I'll find a policy where they let students vote. But, so, that's a little history.
Yep.
Let's see, okay. Financial update we got?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. So the, the other, the only item under old business was the work plan, where we talked about what we're going to decide on September 11th, and, you know, are there more questions about that, other than the one that you asked earlier?
When is the public, Wednesday, the public will have access to all of the data from the sixth grade discussion?
Everything.
And the Q and A from the sixth grade discussion?
Yes. I sent that stuff out earlier today. As long as everybody is in favor of posting all of that as it was received, we'll post that up on Wednesday. And then on the website will be everything that we have, everything that we've talked about. All those documents will go up.
So will there be an opportunity for, I'm sure all of that additional information, even answers to questions? We'll invite more questions? And having the data, all of that research is going to invite more questions? So on the September 11th, is, is there time in that, this is, I don't know, this is my question. I'm not sure there's time to address all of the potential additional questions about sixth grade. It doesn't seem like there's going to be a huge amount of question about school choice, but I guess I might as well have time in the meeting.
I guess I would say it depends on how specific the questions are. You know, it's going to be another one of those where it's like, you know, we're either going to do this or not do this based on benefits and, and things, and then we're going to look at the budget, and, you know, how is this going to look? Can't answer it, got to look at the budget, got to do some other things. But, you know, probably most of those questions should be able to be, and if we post this, those questions get asked on the online forum, so that we're not seeing them for the first time at that meeting. They'll be, you know, condensed and sent to us, so that we can have an answer prepared.
So is there, should we set, like, as long as we have questions by a certain day, that we will be able to have an answer for you? Because otherwise, it's just not fair to, to tell people, okay, we're going to make a decision, but we are going to have the answers yet. So I'm, there needs to be some level of...
So the next meeting is September 11th. If we have the questions by September 7th?
Well, so, you guys have a challenging conundrum, right? So you aren't meeting again until the 11th. On the 11th, the only thing you have scheduled is to discuss sixth grade and to discuss school choice. I agree with Lindsay that school choice seems like pretty supported, and it's about the policy and how you're going to run it. But the actual, are we going to do it? It was part of a commitment made in the Articles of Agreement to come up with a policy. I don't think that any actions that you guys have taken so forth would make you think that you wouldn't go forth doing that. I think we got some really good feedback from the public. Having more than 50% of parents respond is a really high rate for a survey. I expect September 11th to be all about sixth grade and having that discussion. I don't think every question will be answered. I think that every single research article will have positives and negatives. There isn't any definitive that says that you have to have six through eight, or you have to have five through nine, or you have to have K through eight, or you have to have K through five. That, I mean, at some point, the board is just going to have to take in the information, take the feedback from the public, and make a decision of what you guys believe is the best.
So part of my concern is that without having any policy, even like a, here's a starting point, we're not, it's not set in stone, but this is what we're thinking it could be like. How is somebody going to say yes or no, if they don't even know what it might look like?
Yes or no to what?
To sixth grade. What does it look like?
The policy for sixth...
What does it physically look like to have sixth grade in the middle school? What, day to day, what does, will they be commingled? Will they be whatever, every, every time, we always say, "Well, you know, it's policy." "Well, you know, it's policy." And that's true. But I, how do you commit to it without at least a framework? I, I don't know what the process is. I'm new to this, but I wouldn't feel comfortable as a public member.
I agree with Lindsay. I think we should have our administration come prepare and give us more details as to how they're going to integrate the sixth grade, or how they would integrate the sixth grade into the middle school if we decided to go that way. There was some, in my opinion, there were some different options that were left available
Yep.
during our last presentation. I think they've had more time to think about it, and I would like them to have kind of a more cohesive plan as to what it would look like to present to us on the 11th.
What best practices suggest...
I was just going to say, I mean, exactly. Task our, task our educational experts with, okay, if we decide to do this, how are you going to do it? Tell us what it's going to look like.
What do you think is best?
Hey, Bill's ready.
So fortunately, we have two very forward-thinking administrators at the Leland and Gray world. So both Mike and Bob have blocked out a chunk of time after the beginning of school, but before September 7th, in which they could provide for you a model of what it would look like. And then on the 11th, be able to come and talk about it. And we could post it on the 7th or 8th, and then I could be in charge of publicizing all of that to get it out to all of our people, so that people could review it prior to coming on the 11th.
I like that.
Perfect.
Also, I'm...
Wait, 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 one second. We got a question out here that I...
Well, it kind of alludes to what everyone was saying, that I think it's important for, as, sorry, Chris Jurz Townsend, as the 5-6 teacher at Townsend, in sixth grade, I've had several parents concerned in just not understanding, nor do I, what this possibly could look like. So I think it's important that whether you have, like, the best scenario like this, if we could have add the staff that we want, or whatever, or we can't add any staffs, you have two scenarios, and you can really look at it. I think it would comfort, just like the school choice survey kind of comforted people. You heard what they said, and you take it. I think people want to be heard.
Excellent idea. Okay, thank you.
Ken?
And on the other end of that, I'd like to know what the elementary schools are going to look like. Because if, for example, if Jamaica has, you know, two-thirds of their kids in the fifth grade, what's that going to look like in Jamaica? You know what I mean? Is that going to be a sustainable?
Okay.
Yeah, these policies will...
So that, that kind of information is also needed, because, I mean...
Okay, we can have that, too, right?
And also, I got one more question. And it has to do, well, Lori's still here, which is tax rate. Now, supposedly, we're told we're only going to have one budget from districts, okay? At the state level, is there, or is there not, have to be a segregation between the high school budget and the elementary school budget, correct?
So the new charter of accounts that is going to go back on 7/1, has an impact. Dictates that you would have primary and secondary separate in the budget? Actually, the state mandates that you still record charges by the building at the district level. At the S U level, it's supposed to be S U Y, but at the district level, it needs to be reported by a building, because that's how they record it to the federal level.
Okay. Now, my question is, there is a penalty for secondary students and for elementary students. Are there two different numbers or the same number?
No, it all feeds into one budget, one budget number. Both of those feed into one budget.
Right, but I'm saying, are they separate numbers that are combined together? Are they separated down to name point?
They're only separated by the expenses, by primary and secondary, but that makes up one budget.
Right. But what I'm saying is, now, if you move the sixth graders all up to Leland and Gray, this is now the secondary school. What does that do to those two different numbers? Because there's going to be a big shift.
It doesn't do anything to the tax rate, because it's one budget for the whole budget, regardless of where the students are.
Okay, so it's not going to, that's not going to change anything as far as taxes go?
No, not as far as taxes go.
More penalties?
Okay, so, Alicia, you had a question?
Oh, just, I was just curious if we could do a survey for the sixth grade move, like we did for the school choice. Would we be able to get that in time, or could we pull that off, or?
I can do whatever, I can, I can attempt to do whatever you guys directly need to do.
You had a, wait, wait, you had a comment then, too? Because you had your hand up.
I did, but you want to?
I, let's think about that for a minute. Okay. Because we're on, it's another train of thought.
If we just keep it simple, just to get a real, now that we've talked about it with the public...
What question would you ask?
Would you be for or against moving the sixth graders to Leland and Gray? Really simple, yes or no?
Based on, based on what?
Based on...
We don't have a policy, we don't have what it's going to look like, we don't have anything else.
That's true. I just, I just wonder where the pulse of everybody is, that's all.
But it wouldn't be, I don't understand the basis, in fact, I got you a little bit this way.
So it would need to be a little more thorough. We get four questions, right? I'll think about it for a minute.
Okay. Bill, go ahead.
Yes, so in order for our administration at the high school to give you guys what you are looking for, I want to make sure that I can clarify from the board the direction of, because Ms. Jurz brings up a good point. Do you guys want a range? Do you want the opinion of our administrators as to how they would do it? What kinds of resources would be provided? I mean, what, what are the parameters? Because I want to really tailor their work, so that it is answering what you want.
Yes.
Instead of just, I want it to be very productive, you know? So I, I'd love to hear from the board.
You can take me off your list.
Okay. Yeah, the board has to respond to this. There's a, do you, you have a question out there?
I had a question, and I am Marshall Wells in New Haven, but I teach fourth grade at New Brook School. So the guinea pigs, so-called, were the kids I had this year. So I've been talking, a lot of parents have talked to me about this. And number one, they need to see some kind of plan, plan of operations. So having some survey or whatever, it's like buying a new car. I buy a new car, what does it heck, does it look like? You know? And... And number two, aren't you going through training right now, Bob, to do with middle school and things? Wouldn't you know best, better than, I don't, yes, you keep getting trained. Be the experts, the middle school experts, as to how this should look like? Shouldn't the direction, I understand the board giving you direction, but shouldn't there be a little direction that comes from you and whoever's going to these trainings as to what this might look like?
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking for an educational idea on what it should look like, then...
like, then yeah, I would ask the educators. But I think that what I'm asking the board through Bill here is, am I coming in, if I'm spending a day with some people in a room brainstorming this and coming up with what it looks like so that you can make a conversation about it, and Chris's point is answered? Is there additional resources coming? Am I looking at my existing staff? Am I, like, what are the parameters I need to operate? Or am I making a plan for each one? Which is, which I can do, it's just a lot more involved, and so maybe each plan that I present will be less detailed, because I'm, my time will be more spread out between looking at all different options. So the tighter that the parameters the board gives me, the more detailed proposal or plan they're going to get, I guess is what I, I just want to make sure that we're providing what you guys want. If you want a range, I'll give you a range, but it'll be less detailed. If you want one thing, I'll give you one thing, it'll be more detailed. It might not be the thing you want, but it'll be one thing. So I guess that's what, that's what I'm asking for.
True, go ahead.
So as a board member, what I want is your best option. I would like to see what you believe is best for putting the 6th graders together, what the best model would look like. If that means additional staff, then I think you should tell us that. If that means additional resources, you should tell us that. But I think what is best from your expert opinions is what we're looking for, at least that's what I'm looking for. If you say, come back and say that it can't be done, then I want to hear that too. So I'm looking to you to tell us what is best for these students and what that model looks like. I can't speak for everybody.
Yeah, my opinion would be that the reason I would consider a shift, the transition to happen for 6th grade instead of 7th grade is because you all said, hey, this is a really good thing educationally, and we have some data to back it up. And I said, well, if that's really a good thing, then you should talk about that. So again, this isn't, I want what's best for the kids here, and you should know that about me. So tell me what to do.
We all have the two-page thing that Bob prepared, talking about, here are the, here are the opportunities, here are the challenges. You know, those are the opportunities you want. What does it take to get them?
So how do you deal with those challenges? That's what we need to know.
And how do you deal with the challenges? How do you, how do you address all of this and in the best way? And if that does take more resources, you know?
So if I'm hearing the board correctly, what you're asking for is a single approach that we believe as educators is in the best interest of the kids, and if it needs additional resources, to let you know what those are. But how would we do it if we were tasked to do it in the way that's best for kids? Is what you're saying.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we have to do it, we just want to know what you think.
Sure, but I'm not providing you a couple, I'm not providing you multiple options. I'm providing you the best plan that we think we would recommend if this was, if it was our decision, what we would want.
Right.
Put a dollar cap on that. Because I saw his eyes light up there.
So can I clarify my response to Ken about whether it changes the tax rate or not to move 6th graders? It does not if it does not cost any more money, but if Bob says that it costs more money, that absolutely changes the tax rate.
But I think that that matters, because if Bob comes back and says, this is good for kids if it costs a lot more, then we should know that. But if it's good for kids and doesn't cost a lot more, we should know that too. I mean, so I guess if it did come back with like, here's a huge cost increase, but it's also still better if we don't have that, I mean, I would want to know that. It's not like one or the other necessarily.
Clear as mud for you, Bob?
Well, I mean, no, I think it's very clear, but I think you have to be prepared that if you're asking an administrator to create the best situation, they're not going to be looking to look for cost savings. I think you should be prepared for that. And so if that is an assumption that you're making, that creating the best is going to have cost savings, I would say that would be a false assumption. Because we're talking about doing something in isolation. We're not talking about restructuring things. I mean, Chris brings up a really good point, you know? When parents are asking the 4th grade teacher what it's going to look like, structure's important. And Bob and his team can build you something beautiful. I have no doubt about that. But I just wanted to be super clear, that if the direction is build something beautiful, it ain't going to cost any less.
So we are a single...
I don't believe that, I think it can be done.
We are a single district, and we're talking about reconfiguring our structure.
Yes.
At this point in time, we're not asking you to come with, to us with a budget yet.
Correct.
That's up, down, or level. What we're saying is, we're in the process of restructuring. I, from my personal perspective, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I've, you know, been here long enough to see this, and I think it's really important for us to look at this as, well, there may need to be additional staff here, but our structure elsewhere within the district may shift, that's all. And so I think your best sense of this is...
Yeah, so I don't want to be in a position of determining possible reductions on an elementary school staffing. That's, I don't want anything to do with that piece of it. But if, but if you're asking me to create what a middle school would look like here, you can take that information and piece it together with what else happens in a broader sense when you build a budget based on that, or not, depending on where you go. That's what you're saying, Emily, right? That I'm...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It is what I'm saying. I also think that these are questions that we're going to have anyway, as far as our budget goes.
Absolutely.
As far as our structure and our staffing.
I just want to set expectations appropriately.
And I think parents need to know.
Okay, for clarity on that, we have, right now, we have three 6th grades, one is a combined, two are combined? Yeah. Townsend's is combined, then Jamaica's 5th, 6th?
Yes, we currently employ, West River currently employs 2.0 FTE 6th grade.
Okay, so then what that would mean is, in your plan, without adding any other people, you would get two staff members from, where you would reduce that to...
Yeah, yeah, that's how, that's, for it to be, if it was to be level funded under personnel, you would have two 6th grade teachers, or two more teachers added to your roster, however you made that work. Does that make sense? Well, I don't think that's what the board is tasking with the creation.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying, keep that in mind, that's what I'm going to do, because...
Well, I think that's the broader point of what Emily's saying, is we're talking about one tiny piece of structure, and that big piece of structure will be taken care of once you guys start making decisions on those tiny pieces of structure. But they all will have ripple effects.
If he comes back and says, I need two more staff members, do you know that's going to be a watch, because you're going to lose two down at the elementary school?
Well, we don't know that. We would have to decide that later, down the road.
You feel good?
Right.
We just can't assume, what are we looking for?
Right.
So, but do you have what you need to...
He's happy.
You're happy enough?
No, I think I have clarity. You guys are looking for me to design with my team a middle school of Leland and Gray that would incorporate the 6th grade, that would provide the best quality education that we can provide, perhaps in a fiscally responsible way, but you'll deal with that part on the backside. But you'll deal with that on the backside.
Right, yep. Very good. Okay.
We'll try to do this.
I sure will. Thank you for that clarity.
Anything else? Okay, so, anything else on that? Any other old business? You have?
Your hand.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Sorry, Joe. That just, and this is within what the board feels, because I was just piggybacking off of the point where people really want to, really, really want to be heard about this. And so if we were to do a survey to allow people to speak their voice again, two questions on the survey, a simple one, what are your biggest concerns for moving the 6th grade to Leland and Gray? And what would you hope to see if the 6th graders were to move to Leland and Gray? And if the board feels like we're getting enough feedback, that's okay, but I just wanted to constantly make sure that we're listening to the public's point of view as best we can. So that was, you asked me for a better questionnaire.
I would just like to say that if anybody has thoughts on either of those things, I really, really want to hear it, and please submit it on that online question or via a card.
If we can't get a survey in.
We are doing this question thing also, and that should also include feedback, like, hey, I'd like to see this.
Yeah.
And that would be great to see. I really, really want to see all of that stuff, so. I do feel like we have a forum for that, though, that we don't necessarily need a separate survey.
I was just trying to find all ways to reach out.
Mike, I just wanted to kind of build on what Alicia said. I mean, a survey's a good idea, because we got some great information that we did not have about with the last survey on school choice. So, I mean, it might help us make better decisions going forward, and, you know, that's always, that's good for our community. It's really easy to do as well, right? I mean, it was really simple to do that, that survey, just a couple of questions.
But without a policy, what, I don't know that we can be specific about?
There wouldn't be a policy on this, right? Because it would just be, this is what...
They're open-ended.
This is what they're doing.
Just what are their concerns and what are their hopes? There might be good ideas out there we're not hearing.
Trish? So maybe it's less of a survey of, do you want this to happen, and more of a, what do you, what would you like if this happened?
Yes, those were the two questions.
More of asking for feedback, instead of give, pinning somebody down and saying, give me a specific answer, or something not specific.
I completely scribbled out my yay or nay question.
An additional way to seek feedback.
That, exactly.
Why are we afraid to ask the yay or nay question? I mean, we're, you know, we're here doing what our community wants us to do, right?
I, no, I just was saying, not a yay or nay question, simply because it's, there really isn't a black or a white question to ask, I think, at this point. I think it's more of...
If it's a good, if they think it's a good idea, and if they support it.
Just one more reach out, only because the, most of the very, very hard feedback I've been getting back relates to timelines and whether or not we're listening to our constituencies. And that, those are the places where I have felt and been pinpointed. And I know that we have been at the meetings and have been focusing on it and thinking about it, but some people feel like they've been left out. So I think on my conscience would be every, even though sometimes it's redundant, as many times as we can reach out, I think would be comforting and show that we did our best in that area. Because that's where most people are concerned, is that it's going too quick, and they're not hearing, or they're not being heard, so.
So rather than ask any questions at all, what if we just sent an email reminding them to go to the feedback forum and give us anything they want to say?
And come to meetings.
And come to the meetings.
Because they have been getting robo calls.
Because they're, you know, and then we don't have to worry about crafting specific questions and looking for feedback and being specific and whatever. Just encourage them to give us feedback, because the decision point is coming, and come to the meeting.
I think that's a good way to do it, and to say, like, what we had discussed, so on September 11th, this is what's going to be discussed. These are the things that we plan on making tentative decisions about, or preliminary decisions about, however we want to word that. And that, please make sure all questions are submitted by whatever we set, September 7th. And then we'll have to just get on answering them, so that for that meeting, we need to have answers to all of those questions, as best as we obviously can. Not everything will be answerable necessarily, but...
Did we reach the same base with this? I'm sorry, Joe. May I ask you?
Yes.
Did we reach the same base with the survey as we are with the forum, or did you think we reached out to a different base?
Well, the survey, it was the first time that we did the robo calls and the emails from the administrative assistants at each school. So I would, if the board directed me, I would take the same tact of using that communication reach out, but attach the link to the form, so that they could have the direct feedback. They get a click on, I'm interested in giving communication about 6th grade.
Okay.
And then I would tease all that out. They'd finish it by the 7th. I would then collect all those, send them all to you guys by the 7th, along with what Bob and his team has developed. Then we could upload those to the website, so people at least have three or four days before the 11th. So it might accomplish what you're pointing out, which is to make sure that we overreach.
And you're reaching the same constituency base as the robo calls?
Absolutely same.
Okay.
Ladies first?
I was just going to say, we're going off of that then. I think it's really important, two things are really important, getting feedback from parents, because their students are the ones who are going to be impacted, and so that type of outreach is critically important. And making the statement that we really need your feedback, we need your voice in this decision-making process. We can put a sentence in there, ask it specifically for their thoughts, and...
Specifically on 6th grade and school choice, because that's the conversation. But specifically 6th grade.
All I'm trying to do is encourage them to share their voice in a way, because I, no, I don't want it to be just...
Jurz next, and then, and then I can't...
I want to give people as much time as possible, but I also think it's important that we get those questions in early enough, that they can be sent to the administration before they put their final presentation together, because they have the answers to the questions, we don't. So sending them to us is wonderful, but all that's going to mean is that we have more questions. So I would say, if we're expecting the administration to be done by the 7th, then maybe we need to have the questions in by the 2nd or the 4th or something, so that they can make some...
What is the 31st a Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, how about the 31st? I could send this all out tomorrow, I could resend it out on Monday, that'd be two times, and then have it by the 31st, that gives them a week of seeing that feedback, putting it up, you guys seeing it, encouraging people to come on the 31st.
Timeline work for everybody? Okay. I think that's direction.
That's good. Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So the only thing that remains is the consent agenda. You have the minutes that were taken at the last meeting by Al. Since those are the official minutes, I think that's what we can actually approve.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes with the addendum added.
I think we can only just move the consent agenda, or move the forum out of the consent agenda, and then we can do that.
Well, okay, then we can do the consent agenda with the addendum added to the minutes. Is that possible?
No.
No?
Then pull it out.
Aye, aye, pull it out.
That's the motion, can do that. So it's been moved, it's been, that needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to pull the minutes out of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions, okay. So now, the official minutes, and then we had the, our regular minute taker sort of abstracted the video to give them more of the traditional minutes feel. I think we post them as, you know, the official minutes and the abstract of the minutes, or the abstract of the meeting or something? Does that make sense to me?
I think we need to be pretty clear what these are.
Right. So like, so they were...
Some sort of name.
Exactly, I think we need...
And these get posted on the website as, you know, an abstraction of the meeting video by the recorder?
Right, and I think we can do them, as Ken had suggested, as an addendum to the minutes.
Okay.
And label them like that.
Okay. So...
That works for me.
Okay. So your motion then is to approve the minutes with the addendum defined as the abstraction of the video, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes with the addendums, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions, all right, the ayes have it. That's it unless we have some other business, folks.
Well, what's, what's the odds of getting an option C in there? Or like, yeah, because all our stuff here is going off of like, if you look at Lori's presentation, what the dollar would look like with option A, option B, or is it they stay the same? If there was an option C where since we are all one district and have three elementary buildings in the one district, there are no longer town lines, correct? It's one school district. Then since we're opening it up to possibly having choice throughout the district, we're already setting a precedent by saying that it doesn't matter which town you're from, you can go to whatever school if there's an availability or however we wind up deciding that. If there was an option C with Townsend kids from kindergarten to fifth grade going to either New Brook or Jamaica, right? Sixth graders go up to the high school, centralized pre-K in Townsend Elementary School and you should have an extra pole four there to house the supervisor union and we would save on that cost.
Yes.
I would ask why you would do that when it's clear, at least in the preliminary of the school choice, that most outside people want to come to Townsend, why would you close that school? And change it?
Mike?
I just wanted to comment that this is exactly why I made my motion last meeting, was that there's other options that we're not, haven't considered yet because we don't have time to. That's my two cents, that's why I made that motion.
Did we not already narrow this down to what we said we were going to have for a conversation this year?
Yes.
What our 2021 is?
Right, 2021 is those three things that we decided that we would try and tackle. And then after we get 2021's budget done, we can talk about option C, D, E, F, whatever we want to do, because we have another.
Okay, so can we, can we get a straw poll if anybody thinks option A or B is going to happen? So that we can just either leave it on.
Clarify that for me, happen when, ever, or for the next, for the budget year that we're talking about?
For the next two budget years?
In the next budget year, we've already taken those off the table and said, well, we're going to look at choice, sixth grade, and pre-K. And those are the only.
And that's all we're going to look at?
Those are the only things that we're changing for the first year that we run all the schools.
I'll be around.
And then there will be another conversation that we talk about, is there more change going forward? Okay? Drew, and then.
I mean, the board never officially had a vote, but that is definitely the consensus of the board after spending eight hours in a room upstairs, that we were not going to be moving forward with any option this year. We're only looking at the three items that we came out of our retreat with for the first year.
Okay. Just want to, just so the whole public knows that. You had a question?
Yeah, I had a question, if there's been any thought of getting any input from the sixth grade teachers about the move for sixth graders.
We, we haven't sat down with them, but be probab, we have, we've taken comments and, and things from anyone who's given them to us, but we haven't, you know, we haven't specifically asked them.
Joe, aren't you referring to the 1920 or not 2021? Okay.
Yes, FY20, so 1920 school year, yeah. Yeah, it's FY20, sorry. It's, it's the first year we run the schools. Thanks. That always gets me, I've been doing this for a long time and it's still, the fiscal year isn't the really year, but one of these days I'll get it right.
Then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a question in the back of the room, and let me.
Just want to let you know that Mike and I will reach out to the sixth grade teachers.
Thank you.
You're okay, Bob.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Thank you, we are done.